Bills and manifests. Do you have them?
Yeah.
You got them?
Good.
Uh-huh. Any non-public session needed today?
Uh, no.
Wonderful. Opening public comment. Anyone like to speak?
Is that on here?
I can't hear it because of the button on the bottom. All the way over.
I'm Dr. Royer. I'm speaking as an employee of Northwood School. And I would just like to thank the Chair, Keith McGuigan, for writing the wonderful article that he did about the test results for our students at our school. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? No? Yes, no? Alright. Any board members like to take this opportunity to talk? Okay. We will close opening public comment and move on to approval of minutes.
I wish to approve the minutes from last meeting, whichever it was.
September 1st.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one. On line 85, 86, and 87. I have no idea what that is supposed to say. Apparently I said it, but it's a little muddled, so I would like to modify that. Opportunity was lost to have a discussion about what is important. And yeah, I don't understand what that's supposed to say, but I mean, the whole middle part of that sentence can probably come out. I think if you just change it to say something like, "A fuller time curriculum director" could have been considered. One other thing, but I forget what it was. Oh, line 124.
Oh.
Oh, it was a correction.
Yeah.
Oh, never mind. I guess.
I had on 310, line 310. The way I read that, it looked like, the way I was reading it is that they were using that $15,000, the clubs committee was using that whole $15,000 to fund the 8th grade advisor in the Spanish club. But, that's, no, no, no. They wish. I wish. But, the whole clubs committee, which were actually, it looks like we're gonna do that tonight, the, I don't even know how to say, so we approved the clubs committee with the stipends put out a certain way. We're taking away the 7th grade advisor and the drama assistant and using that love sum of money and dividing that up to have an 8th, it's actually, well, an additional, an 8th grade advisor assistant and a Spanish club. They put in a Spanish club facilitator.
And it's not for $15,000?
It's not $15,000. Yeah, whatever, I don't know. And so, it's on that and 325. Both of those made it sound like they were getting a $15,000 stipend between them. Yeah. On 380, I just wanted to clarify, actually with Bree also, because I thought when we did the vote, Bree, that you were still undecided.
I was undecided.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbie.
I know, so too.
And then on line 442. This one's just a word change. This is Mr. Janja Bersen. It's just, should say, said.
Going back, also on line 265. Jocelyn, is your name spelled wrong?
Yes.
No S. No S. There we go.
What did I do?
No S here.
Call for Jocelyn.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Any other comments on the minutes? All in favor of approving minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
She carries. We do not have non-public minutes.
Not a one minute.
Okay, yep. Marjorie, you are up.
Good evening. So, we had our first meeting with the administration here at the school to go over our first run of the financial statements. Jocelyn and Adrienne are working very well with their staff on the default budget that they're on, trying to figure out what needs to be bought, what can be bought, and so forth. Right now, we don't have a revenue statement because we wait until the tax rate's gonna be set, because that's when everything comes back from them. So, right now, we're just working on your expenses. I'm still working on reconciling your payroll and everything like that. I haven't had to spend too much time on that because of the DOE report and the auditors were in this week, so I've been focusing on getting everything to them. And our last day for field work was today, so everything's looking good. I have about six things that I still have to get them, report-wise, but I think we'll be getting that done fairly shortly.
You know, when their, when their report will be done?
Well, they come out and do their field work, and then a manager has to review it, and then sometimes we get like, a list of additional items, and then it goes to the partner, and we get additional items that they request for. So, Bob and I had a discussion, so we're shooting for the end of October, just to give us a little leeway time. So, at that point, if they're done by the end of October, I would ask them to come to the board and give a presentation that we always do, once the audit's completed, and to go over the management letter and all of their reports.
Thanks.
So, other than that, I don't have any specifics on your expenses, because it's really still so early in the year to try to go forward, but, because I didn't know if anybody had any specific questions on certain line items, and I can go back and research them. I do know that the purchase orders for special ed have not been entered yet, because we kind of wait a little time for the special ed rates to be set, to know what we're actually gonna be charged for each student and what school they're at. So, I know we were waiting for that, and I believe they got them this week, so they started entering those purchase orders this week.
Do we have any questions about the financial review? I have a bullet item for unexpended funds. Can you take that one?
If you want to.
The unexpended funds, we had a discussion last time about, as we moved into our discussion on the strategic planning, on the crossing guard, and the possibility of a two-day-a-week curriculum director. And so, you'll see on page 25 and 26, we simply looked at the staffing, looked at the people that have left and the new hires coming in, and with that, we were realizing, and again, this is just salaries, the insurance and everything was separate, we just looked at salaries, FICA, retirement, all of that stuff, and we came up with a savings of $86,000 on that line, just the staffing. So, that's the number I just wanted you aware of while we're talking about the crossing guard and the curriculum director and strategic planning. Now, the crossing guard was, how much?
The total for the crossing guard would be $5,813.10. And that's two hours a day times 180 days.
And the two-
At $15 an hour.
And the two-day curriculum director?
And the two-day curriculum director would be $30,000, sorry, $30,026.60.
That does include?
That includes FICA, no retirement.
Right.
No benefits, because it's just two days a week.
So, again, that just gives you an idea, you know, that's $35,000 off the 86 before you start talking about the strategic planning. So, it just gives you a ballpark as to what you might have to work with.
Thank you for doing that. That's great.
Did you sign those?
Yeah, you'll need to see that?
Yep. The budget timeline on page 27. This is just a draft on, if that looks reasonable to you. If it does, we can get in touch with the Budget Committee and ask them if they've got any suggestions on what they'd like to see as well, just so we can agree on a complete start-to-finish budget timeline, so everybody knows what we're working with. So, we're asking for your feedback on that.
Is this comparable to the schedule those agreed upon last year?
Yep.
Yep.
Budget Committee's always been really easy to work with in setting a schedule in the give-and-take, so, you know, if they, whatever this board wants and that Budget Committee is looking for, you know, we're just trying to help the process to get an established timeline, so we know what we're working with.
I don't think their meeting's October, so we probably won't have a answer.
October 17th, I think.
So, if there's any feedback on this, I can certainly touch base with Ginger Dole and just let her know that, you know, this is tentatively what we're looking at, and then they can take it and provide any feedback that they have.
It's good to be in. Any other questions for Marjorie?
Are we gonna need Marjorie for anything else?
It looks like I do have a question, so I don't know if you're gonna handle it with Marjorie or yourself, but it looks like you've negotiated some kind of a deal with the bus company?
Um, yes. I was gonna bring that up under the bus contract, but I can do that.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all set.
Yeah, that's on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Yep. Thanks.
How are they? Thanks.
Very much. Ms. Young?
Good evening. So, you have my written report in the packet, and then I have a interim report. If you can take one and pass. And I will send it to you. So, for staffing, we're nominating a part-time custodian this evening. For someone, because the gentleman that we wish to hire tonight is only available through to January, when he'll return to school. So, that will continue to be posted. And we're continuing to look for a tutor for the NECC program. We are interviewing Monday for that. And then, due to a change in student IEP needs, we're also, we've also posted a second open paraprofessional position. I will let Mr. Robert talk. Is he even here? Is Steve here?
Yes.
Okay. I can't see him. So, I'll let him talk about the technology plan after. Tom provided some bullet points on what's been going on around the building. One thing is the sign, the marquee sign is not holding letters on one side, and so the whole panel's gonna be taken and repaired, so that side will be blank for a while, the side that's currently advertising the custodian. And then, in terms of safety, when we did our lockdown drill, Chief Drillay noticed that we have proximity sensors, so all somebody has to do is walk up to the door and not actually touch it, and the door lock will release. And he felt like if we had some intruder at the door and a child or even a staff member approached, just to see who it was, that that could create a risk. So, he suggested that we replace those. Tom had a quote from the company that installed them. It's about $1,200. We have that money in the budget, so we're gonna go ahead and do that. And then, the other piece that you have in the packet is the feedback survey that Adrienne had put together. We did not give you every comment in there, but we did give you the percentage of responses, and we gave you a sampling of the comments. Generally, people have been feeling really positive about the start to this year. There have been a few things, you know, a lot of, mostly systems-type stuff, and just sort of those detailed things, getting the kids' paperwork all together on the same day, getting MMS up and running on the same day. That as new administrators, we weren't sort of aware of and anticipating, so those are certainly things we'll pay attention to for the beginning of next year. But really, people have been very supportive, are enjoying that we're sort of taking our time and making sure that we're doing things deliberately and carefully. And I just wanted to point out that our staff is hoping for and appreciative of a supportive school board.
I'd just like to say, from the open house, that I heard many very good comments about the opening and how great it is, and how the atmosphere here this year is much nicer. So, it was very good feedback from the professionals in the building about the atmosphere in the building this year.
Fantastic.
Do people, just looking at the comments here, do people really want the board members to do walkthroughs? Or just a nice little thing?
Somebody did, at least. Wasn't that kind of scary?
Yeah, I don't know if that'd be-
Kind of scary.
Right, right. I know that I'd want that, but if, I'd be interested in doing something, if people really do want that, I don't wanna-
Well, we could certainly put it out there and maybe extend some invitations or something, so that we're not-
There are particular teachers who are interested in-
Yeah, right.
Kind of giving a demonstration or something like that. I wouldn't wanna disrupt a classroom by just showing up and saying, "Hey, I wanna go see the 4th grade today." It just seems a little, a little odd. I will make a note to let them know to invite you if they like.
I did hear a comment, too, how nice it was to just look up and notice that you were there, that, you know, see the walkthroughs and things like that, too. Teachers, I mentioned that also.
Good. And I will say, I can see why it's been a challenge to get walkthroughs done. It is very busy. And we are often sort of struggling to find that balance of getting work done in the office and getting out in the classrooms, but we both really value being out. And we've been in classrooms a lot. We've been in the cafeteria and out at recess a lot, as well. And trying to make appearances at athletic events as well, so.
I think it's great that you did this survey. I would love it if you did an end-of-year survey, too. I think that would be-
Yeah, we'd like to do them periodically.
Cool.
So that we're being responsive. And then, open house was a great success. We had about 88% attendance. I don't have all of the grade levels reporting their attendance yet, but that's what our average is so far. Really wanna say thank you to Adrienne. He really spearheaded the planning, and Mrs. Dow, as well. We had a lot of staff who volunteered to help with setup and cleanup. I was having to shoo people out and say, "Go home." So, just a really great event that brought people together. And then, the other thing on the interim report is some fundraisers for your consideration. PTA wants to do two. I think they've done both of these before, the Yankee Candle and then the Shop With Script, which is a gift card-type thing. And those have dates. And then, the new 8th grade co-advisors, Sarah Hashem and Chelsea Tyler, met with us today and proposed these sort of, either ongoing or specific date-to-be-determined fundraisers for the 8th graders. So, I'd like you to consider those and say yea or nay on those. And Chelsea and Sarah are in the process right now of collecting some information about different options for the class trip, and they're also putting together a survey for kids and for families, just to solicit some input from them on what they'd like to see.
I didn't see any crossover on the fundraisers. Sometimes we have that problem, but I didn't see any on this, between the PTA and the 8th grade?
Try to make sure we don't.
Huh?
We try to make sure that we don't.
So, I motion to approve all of the fundraisers for the PTA and the 8th grade.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I just had a quick question, though. I couldn't remember, and I know this was brought up last year, with the shop, with the shop with script, that 1017 to 1109 is actually just really a push. This is the, it's an ongoing fundraiser that, through the PTA, that you can buy these gift cards online at any point throughout the whole year, so we've just decided that we're going to do a push, like, twice a year. This was approved last year as an ongoing fundraiser. I didn't know, and I couldn't remember what the policy was, or if we had to bring it back each year to get it approved. I couldn't remember what you had said about that, so that's why-
Well, I think it's a good heads-up to bring it back every year. That way, we just know that we're not tripping over each other with competing fundraisers.
Okay.
So, I think it's just a good reminder.
Okay. And that's what I thought had been said, is that we should do it, even though it was ongoing.
Yeah.
So, that's it for me, and we can turn it over to Mr. Robert.
Hello, how are you? I wanted to, I was asked to, and I said I would, all those things. A technology plan was submitted for your approval in the summertime, and I came in a couple of times during the summer and talked about technology, as well as the plan itself. But unfortunately, I should've mentioned the fact that we actually needed your approval when I walked out. So, there were no further questions on the plan, but I didn't ask to get your approval, so we submitted it later to get the approval. At that meeting, I did, some discussion came about adding certain items to the plan as the timeframes would go on, so I agreed, and I thought, you know, that would be a good idea to have certain addendums attached to the plan over time, because I actually wanted the plan this time to be more of a living document. And so, we took, I took the ideas from here and went ahead and did that, and submitted that to you. You should've got it in your packet. As the first addendum of many during the course of the year, I'm already working on the second one, and, for, during the course of the year. And I added some points to the plan that needed to be addressed. A couple of the biggest ones were budget items, as well as an evaluation of what's been going on. And if you look at the item that I did submit, I did try to break it down by section, and the first one was evaluation year-by-year. Year-by-year, in the technology plan, you're supposed to put in things that have happened, ways that, or things that might be going on, did you succeed at accomplishing something? Did something change? That kind of thing. And I did put that actually on an updated D-plan that is actually currently posted on our website. And also, you have, you have a copy of that. Basically, the first year, because of other things going on in the building, I'm just gonna say, it wasn't done. All of our five goals weren't addressed enough overall, in my opinion. You could say some were successes, but a lot more work needs to be done. We just weren't able to spend a lot of time on a lot of those goals the first year. So, a couple of those items are planned to be rolled over for year two, which is now, and year three. So, each section has that split up, and it's actually written in the tech plan itself. Then I went into another section, state of equipment update, wanted to put something in there that basically said, what was going on with client-based equipment that's being used throughout the building? And if you looked at that, we actually have a lot of working equipment that we still use for student use in the building. And if you go by numbers, and a lot of it's probably because the last few years, population has gone down, we are actually over a one-to-one student-computer ratio, which is really phenomenal for us, as far as technology goes. Now, some of that is equipment that is, let's say, a little on the older side, that I still keep around for various purposes, but I still have to count them as student-use computers. So, really, realistically, you'd have to drop that number to 1.85 or sort of 1, but on paper, it would be 1.17, I think? Yeah, 1.17 percent, or, sorry, ratio, for, for computer uses in the building. We're able to keep a lot of stuff going here in the building pretty well, and we have a lot of devices that normally, 10 years ago, wasn't counted as a computer, but it's an iPad, it's still a computer device, a handy handheld, all those count. The only things I didn't count were really old, I have some old laptops in 3rd grade that we don't count. But, you know, they might get some use out of them. We try not to throw too much stuff away if we can't help it. So, I just thought that would be useful information to have on there. The computer-to-student ratio is always big with technology in the state and nationally, so that'll be a number that'll always be updated, and, you know, as time goes on, to see where we go with that. You might see an initial drop because of equipment that will be recycled, especially when testing is wrapping up now. I don't know if you all looked at the schedule, but that's a big technology item going on right now. I'm mixing a little bit of technology talk with the plan, because Jocelyn kind of alluded to that, so I wanna do it. We have a lot of testing going on, takes up a lot of our time the last couple of weeks. I don't know if you've heard about that. In fact, my schedule's actually posted online. It looks really, really hectic. So, the kids are actually doing a really great job with that, but we need a lot of computer equipment to get that off and function. They're doing, and they're usually, I'm sorry, they're doing a really good job taking that test, but we have a lot of desktops still in the rooms that they use right now for testing. When testing's all done, a lot of that's probably gonna go away, because we're talking 7, 8-year-old computers. So, a lot of that's probably gonna come out of the classroom. On a, on a side note, the new purchases that we made recently have been really helpful with a lot of that as well. They've been all over using that equipment. It's been really cool. Other than that, I talk a little bit about budget philosophy and what's, what the plans are for, sorry, that's what happens when you try to save trees, sorry. Budget spending over the course of the year, some major expenses, okay? Really, I just put, these are really, nothing in this thing is really required, but I thought it would be nice for people to know and look at as time goes on. Some major purchases, major projects we've been working on. So, smart board, obviously, ongoing thing, and the Chromebooks and laptops that we got this past year. That helped, obviously, bring the ratio really high. And then, I go right into budget projections. My office, which is me, is really committed now to really trying to have level funding. One of our goals is actually to get more grant funding into technology, into the technology department. From what I'm seeing with the numbers over the last two years that I've been looking at a lot of different things, this goal can be accomplished now. I'm really confident with that. And actually, if you look at the numbers, a lot of, I think I still stayed around 5% more or less. Couple of numbers went up, some went down. I'm really sensing that the price of technology in general, online programs, software, as well as equipment, are gonna go down. If you consider technology a commodity, it goes up and down, but I'm seeing things going lower cost, as well as things becoming more efficient, that you can usually pay less. So, the way I forecast it is that I would try to, each line number's written down, my seven big numbers that I deal with, and trying to make sure, when we do the budget planning process, which I'm in the middle of right now, hopefully I have done next week, and to stay at no more than 5%, but I'm really hoping to start getting some level funding and still increase technology. That's a really exciting, big goal for me, because a lot of it comes down to money, how much money we're spending in my department. So, that's the projection for this and the next two years after this. These are realistic numbers, and not just added on a calculator, they're based on different areas of the, of technology that I deal with. Internet, phone systems, the maintenance of the building, equipment replacement, equipment new item. New items are the hardest one, because you're trying to forecast what you're gonna be bringing into the building. And I did the best I could with that. That's probably the most fluffy number, I guess that's the right word to use. But again, it's best of my ability at this given time. That number is, this little table also is gonna stay here, because when I put out the next addendum, which I'm hoping to do before, right around November 1st area, I'm hoping to have numbers for the actual final budget that I present, and incorporate those numbers in there. What else? Oops. Yeah, saving those trees again, so you can, yeah. Another side item, I know I've asked about this before, but a lot of people will come up here to talk. It would be nice if we brought the table back. It's very difficult sometimes to juggle stuff while you talk, standing here. Just a thought. I thought I'd put that out there. Budget philosophy, I just went over that. When we talk about equipment in the building, it's a big expense, and we bring a lot of equipment in, especially laptops and such, and they have a certain amount of time they last. And when you budget for items, you gotta concentrate on a certain rollover time period. That is the biggest challenge in my department. And the last paragraph that I put in here, every year, that's gonna be a challenge, because you're trying to figure out how much you need to buy, and how much equipment's gonna, how long equipment's gonna last. That's gonna depend on grade level, staff usage, whatever, and where it is in the building. So, we have a lot of units coming up to a three- or four-year time period, the ones that are in that cabinet right there at the three- or four-year time period. You have the forecast for that, as well as the 7, 8 netbooks that were bought three years ago, two years ago. So, you're trying not to have, I'm trying to look at not having a budget that doesn't spike. That's what we're looking at. And I'm on the track for that right now, and I think we're gonna be okay. That's what I'm looking at now. And I put a last little paragraph, I'm sure you read it. I know nothing can be done about that, but it just, sometimes things just need to be said, and I thought it was a good place to put it. Technology changes all the time. And sometimes, it changes very quickly. A budget process lasts a whole year, and anybody else you might talk to who does my line of work, we all laugh about it, we have meetings and stuff. We plan in October for what I'm gonna buy next August. Yeah, okay. We do our best with that, but sometimes, your whole, what's the word I'm looking, methodology might even change by the time that next summer rolls around, because of enhancements in technology somewhere, some new product that comes out, some new way of doing something has come out, in that short amount of period of time. And we ran into that last budget process that I was involved with, and that was a real, real rough meeting I went through that one time, because of- because of changes in what software we were looking at, that I forecasted originally a year earlier, and then we were changing. That's something that a lot of people don't understand, is that technology does change. And we do our best with that. That was pretty much the, the end of that addendum. And like I said, for the next one, it's gonna be more about what's in the building, what's going on in the building, what's happening with student instruction, how the plan's initiating, how standards are being implemented, stuff like that. It'll probably be a little longer one, but that's kinda what I'm looking at for the next installment. I'm looking right at the end of October, beginning of November, all testing is done, and we started doing stuff in the classroom more indepthly. Anything for me?
Any questions?
I do.
Yep.
First off, thanks for the future look at what you think we're gonna need. How many of our computers are being used by the homeschool students?
The homeschool students?
Yes.
I'm not aware of any being used by homeschool students, unless...
I'm just wondering why you use those, that 19, when you figured out you were 1.17.
By 19?
Yep. So, if you take, I just wish you wouldn't think about it next time, so.
That's a good point.
If you do the math, you'll see that I'm right.
I didn't even think...
That you use 399 students divided by, into 469, when in fact, 469 computers, and that comes out to 1.17, when in fact, we only have 380. So, we actually have one computer for, 1.29 computers for each student.
Well, I, I pulled, the number I pulled, the last calculation I made that night, I pulled the final number off of MMS.
Okay.
So, whatever that number was...
I don't know about MMS.
That's what, that's our...
We have 780 students.
That's our population that I'm aware of.
And that's, that's 1.29 computers, so I just...
I can look at that.
Right figures, that's all.
I wasn't aware of the difference, but I will look at that.
Okay. But I do appreciate having, you know, now we have something to look at for, for future, and I, I think that's very important that we have that, so I appreciate it.
Well, you don't wanna brought it up, and that's how it kinda started, so yeah.
Yep.
I thought it was useful.
Thank you, it is.
Anything else for Steve?
Steve, do you need a motion for approval of the plan?
Yes, please, if I could.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on improving the technology plan? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Young, do you have anything else? If anyone has any questions from Ms. Young, we'll move on to the enrollment report.
The report is on page 33 and 34.
Just one correction on 34. The second first-grade teacher listed should be Hathaway, not Harvey.
Say that again?
The second, after Nicole Bolduc's name, it says M. Harvey, it should be Hathaway as the first-grade teacher there.
So, I'd like to bring up, we'll still be getting quarterly-ish class ridership reports, I hope.
I'll make sure you do.
Thank you.
While we're on, talking about teachers, there seem to be, and there always is, I don't know why, confusion as to how many teachers we have. Could you please get us the exact number of teachers that are part of the negotiating contract? Thank you.
Any other questions about the enrollment report? We have a policy in our packet, the wellness policy, up for first reading. Want to discuss that, or is this news to you?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know anything about this. I didn't know we were bringing any more policies forward until after.
So, where do these changes come from, if they are not from you?
I can explain a little bit.
Okay.
I saw it in there, and...
So, we have a requirement for our wellness committee to review the wellness policy annually. The wellness committee did not really exist last year, so this was work that was done the previous year, primarily by Beth Benham and Linda Kremas, who had looked at some model policies and made some recommended changes. So, Beth Benham pointed out to me this year that we were sort of not in compliance with what we were supposed to be doing with the wellness committee or the policy. So, we have formed a wellness committee, we met for the first time yesterday. We'd like to bring forward this policy for this year, and then we'll get into the habit of annually reviewing it. There are some other stakeholders who are supposed to be involved in that, so our core wellness committee will then invite a board member, a parent, a student, and a community member for the policy review pieces. And then other, the, the core group will do other things around student and staff wellness.
So, I was part of this two years ago, before Linda Kremas resigned, not resigned, retired, sorry. But this still has to go through the policy committee, as far as I'm concerned. And brought to us.
I agree with that. As Barbie hasn't seen it yet.
I mean, I've read it now, but, but, yeah. I guess, and I, is, this should be part of the packet also. I'm assuming that Christina Barrett, Barrett Christina, sorry, is reviewing. So, I guess that would be the thing, is does this need to be done before he's done reviewing it?
I'm glad I'm not the only one that does that.
What's that?
I said, I'm glad I'm not the only one that does that, Christina Barrett.
And that's fine, if it does, we'll meet and we'll go over it. I just didn't know if it needed to be...
I think this is a policy that probably should go immediately back to the policy committee and then, and then...
Okay.
I mean, just because, just because we're waiting on that, doesn't mean we can't move forward with things still. Not, I think this is...
Well, no, that's what we had decided as a, a board, is that we were going to wait, so...
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with that anymore. It'll be done by now.
I'll double-check on when that's gonna be done, too.
That'd be great. Would anyone like to give feedback to the policy committee that you could bring back? Looking at it, this is the first time.
The, the other option you have is you could okay it for a first reading, and then before it comes back for the second reading, you could send it back to the policy committee. That way, it'll just be one step closer.
I mean, I read through it and everything, so...
Yeah, I'm fine with doing it that way, if no one else has any objection to that. As to the content, I would love to maybe look at part 3F. I just have some strong opinions about that, and other people may not. But this is about, school staff should strictly limit the amount of time a student is held in from recess as a form of punishment, or a time to complete schoolwork. These students in particular need physical activity. I'd like to be even more strict on that somehow, and say that it shouldn't be used as punishment. We have sometimes some very active kids, and sometimes they get into trouble in classrooms, because they're fidgety, and I think taking away their one time of the day where they can go outside and run around and burn off some of that energy is a, is a bad idea. But that's just my opinion. People agree...
What's a bad idea?
Keeping kids in for recess. The over-energetic ones sometimes...
Using, using, taking away recess as a punishment.
As, for discipline reasons, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, there'll be work, there'll be some work that has to be done. I can get that, that's totally fine, if there's makeup work that has to be done and stuff like that, but... As a discipline...
It's a disciplinary action, you're...
It's disciplinary action, that just makes me, I've heard a lot of complaints from the community about it as well.
I agree with that.
So, if the policy committee would be interested in doing that, I'd appreciate just taking another look at that, and see what can be done.
We'll look at it, but then I, you know, you think, I don't know, you'd get into a whole mess of things just looking at that. You know, I just think of, oh, well, now you're saying, can't keep them in for recess, you can't make them stand on the wall if they did this, you can't, you know, I don't know, you're just taking away more of what...
Let's say, something about standing against the wall?
No, but that's what you're getting into, is like, now, you're saying, okay, now you can't keep these kids in because they didn't do their work. So, don't keep them in because they didn't do their work. So, then, you know, my sons come home and complain that he's had to stand against the wall because they were loud in the lunchroom. So, then you're gonna have a parent come in and complain that, you know, oh, my kid didn't get their recess because they were loud in the lunchroom, so they had to stand against the wall, and, you know, it's just, I feel like we're just digging this deeper and deeper and taking away any discipline that these teachers have over these kids, and...
Kids not stay after school anymore? Is that not, is that not a thing?
What are you, smoking something?
Not much.
Parents don't wanna pick their kids up.
I mean, is it not, it's up to the administration to decide on disciplinary measures, for the most part?
It is.
No, that's not, that's not true totally.
And I agree, it's not true at all.
No, the, the teachers, because that's what you're trying to get away from, is sending all of these kids to the office to make the administration take care of it. So, now you're taking this away from, you're taking some of the, the discipline or whatever that a teacher, you know, has had in the room. You're taking some of that away from them, you're taking some of that authority away from them, and that's what you're gonna get back to, is all the kids are gonna end up in the office again. I just, that's, that's my opinion.
If you charted over the last six years, and I wish you would, but it's very difficult, but we actually have different things like this that, over the years. What the number one issue from the teachers is in this school, it's lack of discipline. It has been over and over and over, and once again, it's the number one overriding thing in here, is, is, is what they would like, their explanation is, sorry, I need my old fart glasses. What part change has room for exploration and growth? Discipline and procedure. And it has been a constant administration after administration, frankly. Ms. Cremoni, in my opinion, was one of the best we've had in a long time, and I know a lot of teachers felt that way. I don't know how we are this year. Obviously, it's still an issue with the teachers. I'm assuming this was done by the teachers?
All staff.
Yeah, so it's still an issue. They are concerned about the lack of discipline that they have, that they have seen in the school over, over time. And I think that that really needs to be addressed. So, I, I, I don't know whether it's staying out of recess, but, but there has to be something beyond candy and playing a game on a computer for discipline and...
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I mean, discipline is, is an issue.
Whether it's staying out of recess, or if you have some idea, I, I just would like to know what the alternatives are. What, what can the administration and the teachers use for discipline? So, maybe that's something that the board needs to look at in, in generalities, because I agree with the teachers, it's, it's a major issue. And, and if we don't have discipline, then we don't have much of anything.
Yep, I, I am not for not having discipline. I'm totally in agreement with you, that we, things, you know, we should, we should look into that, but I just don't feel that taking away recess is a proper thing to be doing for kids that need to run around.
I can tell you, when I was a kid, you took away my recess, and I was, I would behave. Yes, sir, boy, I'll tell you, I did not wanna lose my recess.
Well, I think you make a point, different kids react differently. Some kids, some kids like being held in for recess, because it reduces the social demands, it keeps them out of the cold. You know, a compromise is, students can go out and walk the perimeter of the playground or something, so they're not engaging in play, or going on the swings, or preferred activities, but they're still moving. I do think that having something in here about being mindful of the need for physical, physical activity, particularly for our, oh, active or naughty kids, is good, but I do think having some discretion for both teachers and administration would be advised.
And I don't always agree with that, but I do in this time, and it gives you that, yeah.
What, what it says right now.
School staff should try to strictly limit the amount of time a student is held in for recess. I'll see what's wrong with that, personally, but... Anyway, I, I just, if, if that's not there, I, I would think, I would like to know what the administration and staff has to use for discipline. What, what specifically does this board think is, is fair for them to have for disciplinary uses to deal with? Those few kids that were just as bad as I was.
So, again, why don't we, why don't we kick this back to approve for first reading, kick it back to the policy committee, have further discussion on, on specifically F, and then it will come back to the board again, anyway.
Looks for me. Is there any other items that people want to look at while we're here? That's something rather reasonable to me. Okay, do you want to...
Motion for first reading.
Motion for first reading, I'll make that motion. Motion to approve the policy JLCF for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained?
Three, yes, zero, no, one abstained. Okay. On you, superintendent.
All right, personnel report will start on page 42. First is the nomination of Alexander Wimsat for part-time custodian.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four, zero, I assume?
The next, you'll see two stipends for eighth-grade advisor Sarah Hashem and Chelsea Tyler.
So moved. Do we have to, do we have to approve the stipends?
We have in the past, I believe. It's the, it's the mentoring that we have in.
Yeah, I think you've, I think you have in the past.
Because this is part of their contract, so we just, I guess, okay, that's fine. So moved.
Second that, any discussion on these? I'm still not happy about not having seventh-grade advisor, but ship has sailed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Also, we handed out another personnel report, single sheet. And I won't read through them all, but those are different club facilitators, Maravista, Homework Club.
It's just a redo of the one that we already did, isn't it? With the Spanish club out of it.
I think so.
Very precise amount for your Fun with Fiction Club? Is there a reason that's so odd compared to all the other ones?
Probably what was left.
Well, it's, the total amount was 625, and two people are sharing it, so...
Just split.
Divided by two.
Just split.
Well done.
Oh, we have, oh, there's that now, okay.
This all comes within the contract?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on these? Snowshoe Club, if we have snow this year? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Just a couple of other items. An update on the AmeriCorps grant. We, we've put the brakes on that, at least in the near future. Linda Kremas has met with the Volunteer New Hampshire people. I know Jocelyn had a meeting with them. To say the least, very difficult to work with. And the grant, the, the way it was written, was going to be extremely difficult to carry out as far as what Volunteer New Hampshire is looking for. I met with Joe Gunter, I believe, last week, and he, all along, has said that the AmeriCorps is very flexible and very reasonable. That's not what we were getting back from Volunteer New Hampshire, who is, is basically managing the, the grant monies. And rather than get $20,000 into the grant and not get it reimbursed, I put the brakes on it, and the plan is going to be to, hopefully, myself, Joe, Jocelyn, and Fred Wolf, sit down in the near future, rewrite the grant so it fits more of what we're doing, specifically taking science out and making it language arts and math, which is more specific. There's a decent possibility that it won't be approved if it doesn't have the STEM in there, but we felt very strongly that the assessments that were identified, some of which didn't exist, and the assessments that we're doing in, in the building are not actually matching that. So, rather than get $15,000, $20,000 of service into it, and then have difficulties getting it reimbursed, I thought it would be more reasonable to sit down, redo the grant, resubmit the grant, and if it's approved, then we'll be all set to go.
And that's Fred Wolf?
Fred Wolf is our grants coordinator. So, that's where we're at right now. It was Linda Kremas met with Volunteer New Hampshire as well, and actually, she resigned from the position. It was so cumbersome and so muddled. So, there were a lot of issues. So, we're trying to take a reasonable and thoughtful way around this to see if we can resubmit, and, and hopefully, it'll be approved again and go forward. So, that's where we're at with that.
So, I thought it was already approved, I'm confused, I guess.
If I may, I cannot disagree more strongly with everything that you just said, respectfully. You have a resource in town. I don't know about Volunteer New Hampshire, but I know that they report to AmeriCorps in Washington DC. Joe worked for AmeriCorps in Washington DC. If he's telling you that AmeriCorps is flexible, and that AmeriCorps, if you write a grant one way and you change a subject, they accept that. They're not gonna kick it back to you and say, no, we're not gonna reimburse you your money. That's not how they operate. That's not how they operate. If you change the parameters of the grant, especially in the first year, they are very forgiving when it comes to that kind of thing. If you say you're going to get twenty tutors and you only get six, you can draw out as much as you want. You can draw it out by quarter as far as the money goes. Um, you don't have to take two hundred thousand dollars right up front, and then at the end you're like, oh, well, we already spent all the money, but we only did this much work. That's not how it operates. Um, like I said, you have a free resource in town who has direct lines to Washington DC, who Volunteer New Hampshire reports to. Um, we knew this wasn't going to be super easy to do, especially in the first year, but to actually win a two hundred thousand dollar grant and then say, this is too hard, never mind, I think that's a terrible idea. You have resources that this school needs. They need tutors, they need help with curriculum, and you're just saying, never mind, we can't. I think you should repost the position and see what you get.
If, if the board would like to, uh, have us move straightforward and, and, and cross our fingers and hope that it gets reimbursed, we certainly can do that. I, I wouldn't recommend that we do it that way.
Like I said, there's nothing wrong with going beyond Volunteer New Hampshire and going straight to the program officers in Washington DC.
I agree a hundred percent.
And asking for help, that's what they're there for. They're there to help you get through these grants, they're there to make sure you get what you need.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
So to just wash your hands of it, it's already been approved by the board. You won this money. Use it.
I don't believe, I said we were going to wash our hands.
You said you were going to try again and probably not get it, is what you said.
What would the board like us to do?
Actually, I'm sorry.
I think I made myself very clear what I think. I, you can all disagree with me, but that is my opinion.
I, I just don't understand what's going on today. This is where I'm, like, like I thought.
So Linda met with the people that, so that, I understand that there's the Washington-based one, but then there's this New Hampshire-based that.
It goes through Volunteer New Hampshire.
Right.
Correct. And, and the, the issue with the, the grant itself, it was written for very specific things in STEM grants, which are science-based, and what we really need.
It includes math.
What we really need in the building is, uh, math and language arts. And some of the, um, assessments that were listed under the science were not even assessments that, that are, exist. I mean, it, it, so we were trying to rewrite the grant so it better reflects what we're doing. If that's revising the grant and resubmitting it under the existing grant, I don't have a problem with that. But I thought that it was reasonable to make sure that we're not deep into a grant that, um, we may or may not be covering.
That's, that's the part I don't understand. I thought, I thought it already got approved.
It did get approved.
So, so what's the problem then?
There, there are.
You're worried about not getting our money back? Why would we not get our money back that we spent if it was already approved?
Because there's no way we can fulfill the hours that are put into the grant for the volunteers. Nine hundred hours, three hundred hours, whatever it is, there's no way we can do that.
That's fine. That's what I'm telling you, that that's okay. No one expects you to fulfill a hundred percent of every single thing you wrote in that grant in the first year. That's not how it works. I don't know, Joe worked there for almost four years, and I don't know a single grant that he ever told me about where, at the end of the year, everybody did everything that they said. That's.
But that's not the feedback that you're getting from the New Hampshire-based group.
That's correct.
Which is the group that you have to work with.
That's correct.
Although that group reports to Washington DC.
Right, so if there's a contact that we can get or whatever in the Washington-based one, and like you said, go around it, that's a different story, but if, if what he's hearing from the New Hampshire-based group, and that's who they have to work with, I can understand what he's saying is, so now if the next step is to, to have a, a Washington-based, you know, person, and we can say that the New Hampshire base is not very workable.
Hopefully, we will end up in that place, because Joe has said from the beginning that it's extremely flexible, easy to work with, we can modify it at any time, um, and if we end up with that being the case, then we can move forward more rapidly. Um, but under the circumstances.
And I'm not clear on why you want to just stop and start over when you already have the flexibility to do with you, what you want with what you have. Why would you, I don't, I'm confused about.
Well, it's twenty thousand dollars worth of taxpayers' money that, you know, he doesn't have the okay to just do because he has one person saying that it's okay. I totally get that.
If, if you'd like us to move straightforward and, and like I said, roll the dice, that it, that it will all work out, we can certainly do that. I don't usually operate that way.
You have so much help. You have a lot of help that you can get. This is, it's not undoable.
That's where I, I think we should go, is, is the help. Number one, Fred Wolf?
Hmm.
Um, can he come talk to us? Joe Gunter, I'm sure would go, come talk to us?
Hmm.
And, 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 you know, let's get to the bottom of this, and then if we need to go further, we could. You know, is it possible to set up a meeting with them the next, next, uh, in, in October?
Well, we were going to meet as a group to see what we could hash out on the grant. I mean, that's, that's, that was the next step, was to get, like I said, myself and Jocelyn and Joe and Fred together and see if the existing grant, if there's a way that we can, we can manage the existing grant. If not, rewrite the grant and resubmit. If it's as simple as modifying, which that's not what I've heard, um, then we can certainly do that. But I don't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with any grant that, uh, there's question about whether we're going to get reimbursement. It's not my money. I, I, I mean, if the board decides that you want us to just move forward with that, we certainly can do that. That's not a recommenda-, I was taking the, uh, responsible, reasonable way through this, and if you'd like us to move faster, we can move faster.
So you, well, I understand what you're saying, I think. You're rewriting the grant to make sure that Washington is understanding that we don't have the science, because the, the grant right now is written as a science in math, and we don't have that science curriculum or whatever.
There's a lot more pieces than that. The, the res-, the submissions for reimbursement, um, there were a lot of questions along trying to work with, uh, Volunteer New Hampshire that were extremely cumbersome. And I did meet with Joe, and he said exactly what Bree's saying, that it's easier to go around them, uh, if we can go around them, I don't have any problem doing that.
You absolutely can. You have a program officer assigned to that grant in Washington DC.
And if that's the case, that, that we can fast-track it. All I'm saying is that the way it was going, there were so many questions that it was reasonable to put the brakes on and make sure we get answers.
You have a program officer in DC and you have Joe. I mean, Joe is absolutely willing to come in here, meet with you, meet with Jocelyn, do whatever needs to be done to help you guys with this.
So what, what is the risk we're looking at? Like, what, what outlay would we be putting out before we got an inch of one way or another?
Well, we, we've put out about a thousand dollars for, um, Linda doing the legwork so far. That's really the only outlay we have so far.
But we have twenty thousand and?
I think I was just an example.
Yeah, it was twenty, it was between twenty and thirty thousand, I believe.
We have twenty thousand.
That we said we would.
Pass.
Want to take a recess, Tim, and wait for you?
You can keep going. I'll be back in two seconds.
Okay.
So that's, that's what we had planned. If the board would like us to go in a different direction, then.
How long does it, how long do you think it will take to, um, to reevaluate and everything like that, like to, or to fast-track it around and go to Washington and all that?
Um, I don't know. The biggest thing is going to be carving out some time for all of us to meet.
I'd like to see that done sooner rather than later, and I, I personally would like to see if Linda Cramas would be willing to come back and work in the position if we can go around this, um, New Hampshire-based.
She needs support. That can be arranged. That's not a problem. I don't care who you post it to. If she wants to try it again with some better support and some better resources and some better help, that's great. If we need to post it again, that's fine, too.
She's just not the type to just give up on, on something very difficult, and so it must have been very difficult because she's just not the top.
Like I said, the resources that she could have used, obviously, were not presented to her, so.
Um, and that, it, that could be because the New Hampshire-based part of it, too, you know, you know, if, if people don't know about their resources, you can't use them, I don't want to see it dead in the water. I think it's something that we can definitely use, so I would.
Absolutely.
Like to see us use our resources and, and sort of get on top of it again.
But the flexibility built into this kind of program, I mean, there is absolutely no reason why we shouldn't be able to go forward with this.
I just think that, I think Bob did the right thing, though, because as much as, as it's great to hear you say that there's flexibility, if that flexibility's not written in black and white, he did the right thing. You know, just because you and Joe say that there's flexibility in there, and I'm not saying that you're lying.
We wouldn't have written the grant if we didn't think that it could be done. I wouldn't have wasted my time doing it if I didn't think that it was necessary for the school to have that. That's fine.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, he can't just willy-nilly spend, you know, twenty thousand dollars.
But I mean, it's the first roadblock, because it's a little bit different, or it's a little bit harder, or the program that we need is a little bit different than what's written. I mean, that's not a reason to chuck it.
And that's not what I think. I don't think he was chucking the whole thing.
I don't believe I said I was going to chuck it. I said I'm going to put the brakes on.
Well, you wanted to re-, stop and rewrite it and start over. And I mean, you have the flexibility to change your current grant. Why start all over?
And I hope it's that easy. And if it is that easy.
Like I said, you have resources that will help make it that easy. You just need to use them.
I believe that's what I led off with, saying that Joe was going to be part of that discussion.
I'm not trying to be belligerent, I'm really not, but I really think that, that this grant could help a lot, and.
I don't disagree with you.
It's going to be difficult, but it's going to be really useful, so. I think that's the most I've ever talked at a board meeting, so obviously this is important to me, so.
Um, so putting the brakes on means what? Just that we're, I mean, how is this different?
Well.
What we say today, how's that going to change what you're doing? What are you going to do differently if we say yea or nay?
I'm not sure that I'm going to do anything differently than I had planned, other than getting everybody together, which is what the plan was in the beginning. If it's as easy as, as making the modifications.
It's not easy. I'm not saying it's easy. I'm saying that it's possible, and you should be able to do it with what you have, with the resources you have, you should be able to make this happen.
We can make anything happen. The man-hours involved with it up to this point has, have been not worth the grant. I hope that as we go through, um, the modifications, that it becomes worth the grant. I, I certainly do. And if we can make those modifications, uh, and Joe can assist us with that, then absolutely. And that's what we had said in, that's what I said in the beginning.
A hundred percent, well, he didn't want to just butt in and, you know, I think he was waiting for you guys to, you don't have to put that in minutes, but, um, but if you deed him, he definitely is willing.
So, so I think the board, if I'm not wrong, uh, wants to continue to aggressively pursue this.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the other thing I had was just guidance on the curriculum director position.
Because it's posted and you have.
Do you want us to move forward with the two days a week?
Please.
I brought you, I brought you the, the, the unexpended money on the salaries. If that's something the board is still interested in, we'll move immediately on that.
Go for it.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I had under my report.
Um, okay, because the rest of the bus contact stuff, okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Preferably not about stuff we're going to discuss in old business. Okay, uh, any committee reports this week? Um, I can start with that. I know the technology club, the technology committee did meet, uh, although there was some confusion about who was on it, so neither of us. They thought it was Shane, I thought it was me. Shane thought it was me, so, uh, I wasn't able to make it to this one because I didn't know about it till after it happened. But that has been resolved, and, uh, we'll be, we'll be moving forward with that. Um, if anyone would like the minutes, I would, can email them to you.
What was the committee? I'm sorry.
The technology committee. Um, any, like, this is usually one I, uh, how many signatures do we have here for Cobrown students, you remember?
Um, one, I think.
One. Yeah, sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at these first.
Did I bring any tonight? Nope, these are all stipend forms. None tonight.
None, good. Uh, any other committees? Most of the committees didn't meet. Facilities not here, athletic, athletics not here.
I'd just like to say thank you to the board also for the money from the, for the open house that, uh, to support the open house, uh, food and stuff like that. It was, it seemed very well-attended, and people looked like they were having fun and everything, so.
I second that. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to superintendent goals discussion.
I have something.
So, what I think we're trying to do is come up with a list of goals that we would, um, like to have. Thank you.
There's two pages here, so.
Gotcha. Now, are these the board goals, or these are?
Um, these were the ones we talked about in March. I kind of pulled them out of the minutes and turned them, and then there's a second page, um, with some goals that I found in random places.
I think so.
Okay. Um, there are samples. I got them from a variety of sources. Um, we can think about them, look at them, discuss them, adopt them, reject them as you please, um, but I thought it would help just to see our list of goals that we talked about kind of broken out.
Absolutely, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, no problem. Hiding them back in the minutes is not really helpful, so seeing them kind of in front of us in a list is helpful. We had some high-level goals that didn't have a lot of, um, just kind of lofty in general kind of thing, so those are in there. And then there were some that were a little more concrete and maybe measurable, um, so I tended to separate them out. There were three categories. Um, one had to do with curriculum. There was one that was sort of budget policy, strategic planning-related, and then a category on community and communication. So I tended to group them like that. Um, some of them are paraphrased, so, but it's basically, like I said, came straight from the minutes, so.
Um, Mr. Wells left us, uh, he left me a list of his, what he thought were sample goals, uh, so if you don't mind, I'll just read them out. Unfortunately, I don't have more copies. So he has three sentences here, right? First one being, "By June 2017, the superintendent will provide the board with a plan that provides leadership and support from his administrative staff for the development and alignment of curriculum in all content areas based off, base our objectives off aligning the K-3 math and language programs." Uh, his second bullet was, "Superintendent will demonstrate supervision of the administrative team. This will include administrative team agenda, a written performance for each employee, and compliance with all state recommendations." Third one was, "Seek innovative, seek innovative methods for engaging and involving the community." So, just wanted to get those out there, because that was.
That last one is one of those sort of general and vague ones. I tend to like more concrete things, things that you can say, yes, I did it, or no, I didn't. Um, so that's good, but it needs to be, give examples of what that would entail. That would be my recommendation. Have something that's a little.
So let me, I, I wrote up some of mine, and, and, well, I'd be interested to see what you guys think of this one. They're probably not quite as detailed as what you were just saying, but maybe a little bit more than this. "My top goal was, 'Provide leadership designed to improve student performance and promote academic improvement of the school. As part of this, develop and implement curriculum and programs designed to increase student educational levels as verified by testing scores, including those on the SMART balance and Ecap tests.'" "My second goal was, 'Provide managerial, managerial oversight and professional conduct throughout the SAU and the school district. Supervise the recruitment, selection, evaluation, and development of school district personnel. Develop himself personally, professionally to stay current with issues and trends related to educational leadership and school finance."
Did you just write those, or did you?
I, I did a little research, and I, I played with it a little bit myself, so yeah.
Yeah, that's what I did on that second page. I kinda found them from various samples and other, um, superintendent plans.
Yep. Couple more, "Follow, promote, and suggest changes to school board policies, following and enforcing the chain of command as appropriate. Develop, administer, and promote the annual SAU and school district budgets, and evaluate the efficiency and effectiveness of programs and services funded by the budget." It might be a little lofty still, but, uh, "Work to provide positive relationships with the local community. Represent the SAU and school districts in a positive and proactive manner when dealing with parents, community, organizations, and local businesses. Work and communicate appropriately with the local and online media. Continue to involve the local community in educational issues when appropriate." So those are, sorry, I should've emailed those out to you guys, but...
We can, I can email you this, and we can maybe smash them together, and...
Yeah. Did you have any, um, prepared ones that you came with, or?
No, my biggest thing is just curriculum. I think, I, I think June 2017, um, and, but I think that what, um, Shane said in his, I think that's just way too big. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, curriculum for K through eight, everything from A to Z. I would look at it as, let's start with developing a math curriculum, and then, you know, then developing a language art, or, you know, however. But trying to develop language art, science, you know, because we have no curriculum of, or, you know, a set curriculum for any of them. Trying to develop all of them at once is something I would think is just a little too big of a bite to take.
Well, it's, it's gonna be mostly establishing a plan to get that done. I mean, uh, an overview of, of what you're gonna do and pacing and, uh, some kind of a timeline. If, if you're going to look at, that is a giant undertaking. And if you're gonna accomplish that, you know, you really have to look at, what do, what do we need? What are the tools we need? What are the budget we need? What are the staffing we need? What is the, the time involved in that and getting that done, and then setting a plan accordingly?
That's actually the first thing I wrote under the, um, concrete ideas. It says exactly what you just said, kind of in a different way. A long-term plan for curriculum development and program standardization. I think developing the plan is what's needed first.
Well, and it, correct me if I'm wrong, but the two-day direct curriculum director that we had, she did a presentation to us that had a very good laid-out plan that was, at least, it was me, it was at least the, the fishbone of, of, of a plan that was very nicely done, so at least that's somewhat done. I mean, I don't know if you guys have been able to see that, um, or not, 'cause it was, you know, a year or so ago that it was presented to us, but it was at least the framework of, of what the plan would look like. I think it was a five-year plan.
Yeah, and, I mean, the...
For curriculum throughout the whole school.
Right.
So at least some of that work has been done, and hopefully, when and if we get another two-day curriculum director, yeah. It would continue.
That the lady that ended up wanting to be the liaison between us and the teachers?
No, this was our, this was our two-day curriculum director that, you know, was hoping it was gonna go full-time, and then it didn't. And she did the presentation. She did a lot of work, actually, in the short time that she was here. She did a lot of work. You don't remember that presentation?
I remember a presentation, but we used the lady from, uh, Nottingham for a while.
No, this was, I don't remember her name.
Ann Davis.
Oh, Ann Davis, thank you. There was a lot of work done though.
Done before I got here.
Just looking through these, I, I like yours as well. Um, the only thing I think... The end result of this is that we are going to come together with a set of goals and bring them to the joint board meeting, 'cause at the joint board, we're gonna bring all of the school districts together and, and have actual goals globally.
I'd like to be able to combine whatever we talk about here with whatever list you have and whatever Shane has, and then actually decide on which ones.
Yep. Yeah, I just, some of these, I think we gotta be careful with the phrasing, saying our new, our new math program, 'cause this isn't something, 'cause really, it's gonna be the joint board giving us to him, not the, not our board.
But we can have our own goals for him. It doesn't have to be joint board goals. We're supposed to bring our goals and...
Okay, that's fair enough.
And you're gonna be talking about the strategic planning process in a little while. All of this and more would be included in your strategic planning process, so...
Did you have some goals in mind that you, that you can...
I, I, to tell you the truth, I haven't had an opportunity to spend a lot of time on it. I, I had curriculum development revision on here as well. Certainly, a goal this year is, is trying to assist the, the new building administration to get acclimated and provide support as, from my office as much as we can. And contract negotiation certainly is an ongoing goal for, for every time we have a contract cycle come up. And also, uh, the budget, making sure that, that we both develop a responsible budget that suits our needs, as well as passing a responsible budget and doing everything around getting word out and, and the public relations piece of that. And then, um, you know, another goal is going to be the efforts to establish full-day kindergarten. That's not, that's something that's, if, if the board is gonna go, uh, through with that to a Warren article this year, or in the budget this year, it's still gonna take a lot of, uh, educating and public relations and, and getting the word out with that as well. So that's, those are just a few that I thought of immediate goals.
So I emailed those, what I'd had to you. Do you want Shane's?
I mean, I think if you could come... I'll email you mine, and we can, or do you wanna email me yours?
I already did email yours, but I could have this too.
Oh, okay.
Did you wanna put them together into, into a list, and then, so?
Yeah, I can do that.
Our next, um...
Do you want me to combine these all into one?
If you don't mind, sure. That'd be, that'd be great.
One kind of document. Actually, a few of these things, a couple of these things anyway, on the first page have already been done. One of them was yours. It was the, "Establish a board newsletter for the community. If you wanna count Facebook as a newsletter, you've already kind of done that."
We do have, we have a joint board meeting in a week and a half, and I don't know if, is the superintendent goals on that agenda? Do you have an idea?
Yes.
It will be. So if we could have our, our list of superintendent goals for that meeting.
Sure.
That'd be awesome, 'cause then...
Do you want me to email it to you and Bob?
Maybe to everybody, yeah.
Everybody?
I think everybody would be good.
So we're gonna separate them out into the joint board and our board goals, is that it?
Is that necessary?
Well, because like some of them said that, like, um, Keith said, some of these have like the, um, our math program and stuff like that, so taking that out, that's more of our goal.
You wanna send me what you have as well, and I can add those in? Are they all up for discussion at this point?
Other than kindergarten, I mean, you've got everything that I had mentioned in these two sets of goals already.
I think I'm supporting the new administration. Sorry, guys. I'll add that, I'll add that in.
Keep in mind that, um, there's two different things happening at once here. You, you, the, the SAU is gonna be talking about goals for me, um, for my performance for the year. Separate from that, um, you're gonna be developing your district goals. And, you know, certainly, they're going to piggyback off each other, but your district goals are probably gonna be a lot more specific and, and encompassing than the individual goals for me at the SAU are gonna, going to be. So, um, you know, I would anticipate that there's, there's a goal at the SAU about, uh, our building and where we're gonna be located and that type of thing, which really has little or nothing to do with you as a district. So, um, you know, i- i- anything that, that isn't incorporated as a goal for me individually, don't feel like you're, you're losing it, because like I said, your strategic planning process is going to incorporate this times ten. Um, you know, you're gonna have action plans to address all of these areas and more, especially the subgroups that you've got down here. Technology and facilities management, curriculum, um, those are gonna be pretty expansive in a strategic planning process if you choose to go through that.
Yeah, I mean, we started this discussion, it was about getting together goals for use for the joint board, so they could give them...
Well, like I said, the first page was very clearly stuff we already talked about, and the second page was stuff that I just pulled and thought sounded possibly appropriate, so like I said, these are up for discussion. I don't wanna present them to the joint board as our goals when we haven't even discussed them as a board yet, since they were...
Right.
But I...
Right.
Thought of.
So what do we wanna, so what do we wanna present to the joint board?
Yeah, 'cause I'm looking at these and reading them through a little bit more, and these are more school-based ones than joint board ones.
Right.
I guess I would suggest that each board bring all of this to the joint board meeting and have it as a reference as you, as three boards together, go through a discussion as establishing goals for me. And then probably the goals for me are gonna end up being, um, you know, whatever rises to the top from the three individual boards in that discussion. Now, that doesn't, again, you, you're not gonna lose anything that's on your list, because whether there are specific goals established for me or not, it still needs to be done within your district. So I think I would, I would suggest that the board put this all together and bring it for your information to kind of guide you as a board in the discussion with the other three boards, if that makes any sense.
It makes sense, but I just, is there anything on that second page that you would like me to delete, I guess, at this point? I'm happy to be all-inclusive with whatever the board is comfortable with, but I don't want to just present a bunch of stuff that I, and I alone thought was appropriate. So like I said, if there's anything you don't want on here, let me know, and I'll take it off before we have the joint board meeting. And likewise, if you have anything else to add.
No, I sent you my, my ideas for the add.
Okay, so I can add yours, and then...
Well, or, a lot of them overlap too, so it'll be...
I might be able to just combine the language somehow if they're similar enough.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with any of these.
They're awfully quiet.
I just, I just...
I mean, there's, there's nothing, not, at least what I see, not one specific here.
I agree with that.
Like, what do you mean?
So they're meaningless to me. I mean, what, what, to me, an evaluation, you know, any evaluation I ever received in my life were goals was... I mean, goals was, uh, "My goal for next year is a 1.78% increase in whatever, or whatever." You know, that's business. That's what I was at. So I mean, it was very specific.
And the ten or fifteen resources I found for posted superintendent goals in various states, these are the ones that I found, so...
I understand. I'm just, that, so, so I'm just saying that...
I'm happy to put in whatever you want, but you didn't bring anything for me to add, so...
It, it's, it's not gonna happen. They don't make them specific. I mean, I, I'd like to know, like, "Work with the principal to review and improve the teacher evaluation process and ensure that achievement goals and meaningful feedback are given consistently." Geez, that sounds wonderful. I would have a lot of questions about teacher evaluations. Did any of the teachers responsible for a 30% only proficiency in math, or, was that in any evaluation? Or, you know, and I could go on and on, or is that just something we ignore?
I mean...
And the answer is, we ignore it.
I mean, you have something you wanna write. Give it to me.
All right, I'll write a few.
I thought that's what the whole point of having this discussion was, is that we were all supposed to bring something to the table.
But I mean, we, we don't do that.
I mean, I just did it. What do you mean?
No, we don't do specifics. Show me a specific in there.
Specific, "Curriculum. Work with the principal to revise, not only a report on student test scores, but an interpretation of those results that detail changes over time." That's specific. That's asking for a very specific report.
"Review policies on a rolling basis and make sure they aren't forced." That's concrete.
Yes, but you, you guys know...
Alert the board to changes in state and federal statutes, regulations.
I'm always looking for improving education. That's, that's, you know, how are we gonna ask him specifically to show us that he's improving the education in our school, the education of our students?
"Develop and implement curriculum and programs designed to increase student educational levels as verified by testing scores, including those on the Smarter Balance and NECAP tests." That's what I did.
How's that sound?
Do we do NECAP anymore?
Sorry.
Oh, I was thinking it was the Newa. That's what they're doing right now. There's too many knees. So I just circled the ones that I thought were more joint board.
Okay.
Versus specific to like our school.
I mean, I can try and divide it out into...
Well, I think some of them too, I mean, like, work with the principal, I think you can work with staff, and then all of a sudden, it becomes a joint board, you know, rather than a specific school district.
Well, like, 'cause I didn't circle, like, hired, full-time curriculum director and athletic director, or established full-day kindergarten. Like, I wouldn't, I would leave those off, because that's not joint board.
That's fine. Like I said, this can be, I can have two different documents going on. That's very easily done.
Yep.
I just wanna know what should be incorporated into the whole list, and like I said, if there's anything that shouldn't be on there.
These would just be my suggestions.
Okay.
See, I look at goals as, as a mini strategic plan. A strategic plan setting where you'd like to be is useless if you don't have the action plans, specific action plans attached to it. Goals are much the same thing.
Do you have one? I'll take your. Sorry.
So to, for the assessment piece of it, uh, it comes down to the action plans, and I'll give you an example. When I was up north, the dropout rate at, at Kennet High School was 7%, and one of the goals, overarching goals, was to reduce the dropout rate. So if, if, you know, I don't think there's any one thing that you can do to reduce your dropout rate. So they handled it much the same as a, a strategic plan, in forming a task force, in setting action plans, and checking off each action, action plan as you go as being complete. Now, the long-term, two, three-year, um, result of that was that the dropout rate went down substantially. And each one of those action plans by themselves didn't bring the dropout rate all the way down. But each one of those action plans by themselves, being implemented, were part of the whole of bringing that down. So when you say, "A goal is to improve test scores," let's say that the goal is to improve, uh, you know, over the next three years, improve the Smarter Balance test scores by 25%. By itself, that's kind of a meaningless goal, because you can't wave your magic wand and raise the test scores. However, you can hold me and everybody else accountable for the action plans to get that done. If one of the action plans is, um, "Create full-day kindergarten to, to encourage, um, lowering the achievement gap as incoming students," that's one action plan. That's one thing that will make a difference on the test scores down the road. So putting a number of those action plans in place, whatever we decide the action plans are appropriate, that's really the assessment at the end of the year. Did we do this action plan or not? And then hopefully, a year, two years, three years from now, putting all those action plans in place, you're gonna get the desired result.
I think the hard part with doing it as a joint board is, is, I, I can see doing that as, as a Northwood board for you, but as doing it as a, as a joint board is like, you know, Nottingham was lucky enough two years ago, three years ago, to get their curriculum director. So, you know, we're all at different places, and trying to give one, you know, to say, "We want full-day kindergarten," but Stratford and Nottingham don't have it, right?
Right, but I would, I would assume that attention to curriculum and attention to test scores is going, are going to be two goals that are always going to come to the top as, as far as being a superintendent.
Right.
Now, in each of your districts, the action plans are gonna look different.
Right.
Because, like you said, Nottingham already has a curriculum director. One of the action plans for Northwood might be trying to set a plan to be able to get a curriculum director, budgetarily, public relations-wise, all of the, all of the above. So although the goal might be the same of, of a cohesive and coherent curriculum, the way we're gonna attack it in each of the districts is gonna look quite different.
And I think that's what we need to decide as a joint board, is, is, you know, making those big headlines, and then coming back and evaluating him from the action plans, like he said, as an overall type of thing versus, you know, these different tools and things that we've been trying to use and everything is, you know, because we're trying to attack it, and we're trying to overlook it. We're, you know, we're on three different levels and trying to evaluate.
There's definitely two, two levels going on here, the, the joint board, and, and this should drive, you know, what we want for our schools will drive what we want on the joint board, right, at that level.
We all agreed, I think all five of us agreed, that we wanted a curriculum director. My only question to the board is how we're gonna pay for that. And yes, Nottingham has a curriculum director. Nottingham has more than a hundred more students than us. Nottingham's budget is more than $500,000 less than us. So they have given up something to have a curriculum director, and frankly, it is working well. And that's what we have to look at, you know, it, it's, it's not gonna happen if you just want to spend more money. We have to figure out how you are gonna pay for that, and that's one of the reasons why I was against the other guidance person. I don't wanna fight that battle again. All I'm saying is that, um, if you, you know, and I'd love to compare us to Nottingham, but it's very difficult. Um, they have a school that they can fit, barely fit their students in. We have a school that has a lot of room. They have... We have a school that has a lot of room, they have a lot of different things than us, but yet they're doing a much better job. Their curriculum director has been wonderful, I just, and part of that is, and you're right, they have a curriculum director. But they also have a very unique, outstandingly wonderful curriculum director. They really got lucky, and they admit that. So, and I'm for a curriculum director, how are we gonna pay for it, that's all, just show me that and I'll vote for it.
Just out of curiosity, does Nottingham have, or we will have had, a $300,000 bond payment each year?
No.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just...
I mean, again, there, there are many pieces, I can't, I can't just tell you that a curriculum director and you're all done. It doesn't, doesn't work that way, I mean, there's a lot of other pieces to put into place too. And even if, you know, if, if we're getting a curriculum director, if we're going for a curriculum director, that may be one of the action plans, but like Tim said, how are we gonna do that? I mean, there's a budgetary impact we gotta figure out, there's a, a kind of public relations impact that we've gotta figure out. I mean, all of that, those are all, in my mind, action plans on getting this one piece done.
That's actually why I wrote it that way on that first page, was like, it's a goal, but it doesn't have any action items or anything specific lined up for it, so I think those things need to be the actual goals, not, I mean, hire a curriculum director doesn't tell you how to go about it or what steps can be taken to do it.
And that can't be the end of your goal either, because if we don't get a curriculum director, the goal is still there to improve curriculum, so...
So, why don't we throw this on the agenda for next week where we can focus more on our district goals? Have some time to digest it, and I think we have enough information for the joint board meeting, that we kind of know where we're going forward with that, right? If you wanna throw, synthesize some of that stuff, that'd be awesome too.
So, put this document together, try and separate out, is that my directive here? Just making sure I understand what I'm being tasked with.
You're volunteering, so I will take whatever you have, whatever you want to do, but yes, I'd love to see, you know, a, maybe a list of...
What I think are sort of board-specific and then joint board.
Maybe joint board more important, 'cause we can talk about the board-specific stuff, you know, more next meeting.
And if anybody has anything for me to add in the next week and a half, email it to me, and I'll put it in there.
Free, if there's any, when you get it all put together, if you can email it to me, I'll get it in the next board packet, that way the board will have it before the meeting.
When do you need it, by, if I need to do that?
Uh, a week before the meeting.
When is the meeting?
We, we send out...
Next week.
We try to send out the board packets a week before the meeting.
We actually have a week off, 'cause we have five Thursdays in September.
Oh, yay.
So we're meeting on September 26th?
Our next, our next regular board meeting is October 6th. September 26th is the joint board meeting, yes.
I thought you wanted this for the joint board meeting.
We, we do, we need just the joint board goals.
I might as well do all of it, I mean, working on half of it seems sort of silly, but...
You're gonna have a pretty tough time getting it, aren't we a week out now?
What's that?
We're pretty close, Monday's a week out.
Not the joint, not the joint board packet, I'm talking about this, this board's packet.
Oh, you don't want it for the joint board.
I'm not gonna be at the joint board meeting.
No, I would, I would bring it yourself to the joint board meeting for discussion. I'm talking about...
You can email it to us.
I'm talking about the district goals for this board.
Right.
If you can get that to me a week prior to your next meeting here, I'll put it in your packet.
Okay.
In the Northwood packet.
But you want me to bring a paper copy to the joint board meeting to share?
With, with...
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with email either, but it'd be fine.
If I can get the whole deal to you by Monday...
Right.
I'll do my best.
All right, so you get that on our agenda for next, next week too. Cool, thank you very much for doing that, Free.
It's great. Problem.
Okay, moving on, bus contract?
Bus contract, uh, just some information on 44, 45, 46. Um, I met with Deb DeLisandro, and you can see on page 45, um, that there's, with temporarily eliminating Route 7, she's going to discount $235 a day, which is the cost of one bus route.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions on this or discussion, no?
There's a question at the end of her email.
Oh, the Twombly Drive thing?
Mm-hmm.
I already did.
Oh, you did? And what was decided?
Um, I believe the decision, isn't that the, um...
Whether she wanted us to tell her whether we want her to take that three-tenths of a mile or not.
Turn around at Twombly Drive, I'm sorry, I was talking about the other one that we were talking about. Um, she said as far as Twombly Drive goes, she can go up in there and turn around, it's two-tenths of a mile, I believe she said, maybe two or three minutes. It really doesn't matter to her if she stays on the road, backs up and turns around, or whether she drives in and turns around. The only caution she had was there are other areas around town that may be in similar situations, and she's always weary of being caught in the middle of somebody else saying, "Come up my road too," or "Come up my road," or "Turn around in this cul-de-sac." So, she doesn't, in this particular case, she said she really doesn't care either way.
To me, the, one of the issues is the shortness of it, it's very, very short. I also think it would be safer rather than, than backing. So she turns in, it's a turnaround, it's more than big enough to make a bus, um, whatever. There are, as she says, many others, I happen to live off of Deerfield Road, and I'm sure everybody would love her to come down Deerfield Road. It, there's nowhere to turn, you know, it isn't gonna happen, um, so, so that's not gonna happen. I don't know where else she means, I wish she had given us an example. But, sure, a lot of people, Angela Drive is another one, I'm sure that people would love the bus to go down Angela Drive and pick up the kids, but they have to come out through the main road. But I, I think this is unique in that it would eliminate stopping on a road and backing in. That's, that's why I think it would be safer to, and, and, and it was 10 seconds difference when I tried it with my van, or truck at the time, to drive in and come around, so.
Where is Twombly Drive?
It's on Lucas Pond Road, that's where she ends, there's no kids beyond that.
Whatever you say.
She just ends there.
If you've driven it and you know where it is, I'll, I, I'll agree with you, 'cause I have no idea. If you're saying it's safe for her to do it, and she's saying it's safe.
She, she said it, it really doesn't matter to her either way on this one, so...
And was this a request that we had, or...?
I believe it was a parent request.
Oh, okay.
She, she called me and I brought this to you guys at the last meeting.
So, yeah, I'm fine with that. Yeah, you guys are fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let her know. All right. Strategic planning update?
You, you have all of our... You got all the materials.
Did you guys, everybody got a chance to look at all the packets? I probably brought mine, so I forget the names if you know. I know, talking to Shane, Shane really liked the, um, the expensive one, I think, I can't remember which one it was.
The $99,000?
Yeah.
That one is so beyond what we need, like, entire universities are using that, it's so much more, I mean, that's overkill for a school the size, in my opinion. It was very fancy, but, um, a little over...
I, I agree with that.
Overmuch for what we need, just my opinion.
Is this one Stephen's strategy?
I thought that the middle two were pretty good. I thought that the lowest one was not very detailed, so I wasn't even 100% sure what they were going to do as a plan. They didn't have a lot of concrete things in there, so I was a little confused about even giving an opinion on that one. Um, but I thought both of the middle ones were pretty good in different ways.
So, Think Strategy, I think is one of them, right?
Yeah, I don't remember the names, I just remember the prices.
Think Strategy was the $21,000 one.
Human Dynamics was $34,000. Stephen's Strategy was 99.5. Think Strategy was 20,965, and yet was 6,800.
So, it looks like our budget has, right now, about $50,000 to work with on our teacher salaries, so... I knew the lower three would work.
Well, and I think what you had said at the end of the last meeting too, was that, you know, I mean, I, to me personally, the first, the bottom and the top two, like you said, the, the top one is probably way more than what we needed, and the bottom one is... But looking at the middle two, like, if we went with the 21, they, we could probably look at and say, "Well, if we need more hours," or something like that, then at least we have some leeway that way. They, you know, could do like a prorated per hour or something, didn't you say something that we could probably do something like that?
Yeah, I'm sure that they would, would modify that any way you want. I, I, I would, might suggest that if you've got one that you're leaning towards, I could certainly get in touch with them and ask them to come to the next meeting, and you could have a discussion about, you know, what they're gonna offer and any details that you need from them directly.
One of the middle two, and now I've forgotten which one particularly impressed me, because they said that they wanted to do forums, whereas the other one just said that they wanted to have a committee. I was like, "Well, we're a committee, we could've done that, we don't need to pay them 20 or $30,000 to do it ourselves." It was the forums and going out into the town and getting parents' input and teachers' input and other people's input that I thought was important. So whichever one had that in it was the one that I liked.
I thought they all kinda said that, didn't they though?
No, they didn't actually, no, that one was very specific about having forums and the other one...
Well, the committees though, they would have the, uh, community input on them, more of what, but going out and having forums that are just...
It's very narrow and it's very selective, and you only get that one small group, whereas if you have forums, you can have a forum of parents, or a forum of teachers, or a forum of whatevers, and get a lot more opinions and a lot more feedback then. Whereas if you just had a committee and you say, "Oh, well, there's 12 people," well, you just alienated 4,000 other people by having a committee and not a forum.
Yeah, it just depends on how many people show up, show up.
And the other option, I could, if, if there's two of them that you, you want more information, I could ask a representative from each of them to come to your next board meeting and take 15...
That would be nice.
Take 15 or 20 minutes to, I mean, you're gonna be spending some substantial money here, so...
Right, so, you guys wanna do that, we'll just do the Think Strategy and the, uh, Human Dynamics? That'd be great.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know exactly what to do, I, I find curriculum is a muddy water issue and strategic planning is a muddy water issue. You know, it's, it's, it's not specific. I understand and, and, and what we were gonna get, and we got it when we did the management thing at the SAU. I understood what we were gonna get, and we got it when we spent $35,000 on the, uh, special education thing. They were very specific, things that, that, that we should be doing, we're doing them now, and it has certainly improved both the management and special education. But strategic planning is, just seems very muddy to me.
Well, I'll ask them, when I, when I, if that's what the board wants, is, are those two to come in, I'll ask them to specifically bring, what are the, what, can you bring us what the outcome is gonna look like?
Yeah.
What's the final product here, bring us, bring us examples.
I'd like to see that, 'cause I, I, I'm sorry, I'm just kind of a black and white visual person.
That's great, that'd be great, should we give them each like, what, 15 minutes, half an hour?
No, more than half an hour, but see what they need.
Yeah, I'd say 20 minutes to a half an hour, I'll tell them 20 minutes and then we can have 10 minutes for Q and A.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get in touch with them.
Okay. Our technology plan, uh, we already talked about, I don't think we have anything else to do for that, right? Our parking lot items, we have four things in here, review supplies and budget development, cafeteria ceiling, CIP plan, and club's financial support discussion. Anybody have any new information or want to take any items on those? Okay, and taking a look at our timeline. Pulsey Books, review of board goals, on track for that. Discuss budget preparation, we did that, so I think we're all set for that. Coming up in October, since our next meeting is in October, written notes of intent to bargain, I think we're on track for that. Budget preparation, we're gonna get going, staff list, all personnel, sure, I'll take care of that, I don't know what's on here. And the superintendent evaluation will be taking place at the joint board, joint level, so I think we're all set for that too. Any, uh, future agenda items, right now we have our, we'll go over our district goals, um, and we're gonna get the presentations for strategic planning from the two representatives. Anything else, somebody wants to put on the agenda for our next meeting, October 6th?
Whether it's agenda or whatever, I, I at some point, and, and I've started a list, and I'm gonna bring a list of questions to our next meeting, that I would like to know about regarding the math scores. I'd like to know what, you know, we're doing, but I'll, I'll bring a list of questions, but, I mean, I, I think that's something that we should be discussing, you know.
Yeah, talk about the math, the math, uh, Smarter Balance scores?
Yes, I mean, you know...
Can it be a wider discussion than just math, can we not talk about all the scores?
We certainly can, I just happen to be, you know, concerned about the math. Um, when you have a, um, grade that only 30% are proficient in math, I, I, we, we know many answers. We, we know who those kids are. So one of my questions is, are we doing anything for those kids, different, to help them? It's gotta be a few kids, 30% of, let's say, a class of 40, you know, it's, or 70% of a class of 40 is 28 kids. Are, you know, have we said to ourselves, "We kinda let them down, how are we gonna help them get back up?" Not just go through the regular program, but what, you know, those are the questions I'm gonna bring to you. I've got, uh, 12 days sitting out kayaking to, uh, between now and then, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask some more questions, but I, I, I think we, we need to answer to ourselves and them, what are we doing to help those, what are we doing to resolve that kind of an issue? So, I don't know if you wanna put that on the agenda, or you just want me to ask that in...
I'll put it on the agenda, I think that's more of a...
It would be helpful if we could have the questions in advance, just since we're new and don't...
Well, that's gonna be tough, where I go in the wilderness, I can't email you, I can't even call you. But I'll be back, when is our meeting, I'll be back on the 29th, right? Maybe I could give you the questions.
You're not leaving until Monday, right?
I'm leaving Monday, yes.
He's saying he's gonna develop his questions voice out.
Oh, I thought you said you had the list of questions.
He has to be in a kayak and thinking while he's developing the questions.
No, I have 12 nights, you know, out in the wilderness, that I can think about all these questions I wanna ask, and then, and I intend to.
Yeah, but getting those questions to, to the whole board would be great, if you could do it beforehand.
I just, you know, I, I just wanna know what we're doing about it.
How would you like it listed on the agenda?
Discussion. Smarter Balance results, math discussion, math, Smarter Balance results discussion.
All right.
Mix it up, just any of those words.
All right, I'll mix and match.
Uh, future meetings coming up, we have the joint board meeting a week and a half from now on, Monday, starting at 6:15. Uh, then we have our week off, and our next board meetings are on October 6th and 20th. And then another joint board meeting on October 24th. Is there any closing public comment?
Thanks, Gary. I'm speaking as a, an employee of Northwood School. I'm wondering if the tutors that would be coming in under the AmeriCorps grant would be highly qualified? 'Cause according to the DOE, if you're a paraprofessional, you need to be highly qualified. And we had to go through that whole process, I think, at least a few years ago, if not more, probably more like 10. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about was Smarter Balance. Last year was the first year that our kids took it. It was not a paper and pencil test for the first time, it was taken on the computers. Some of our children don't even have computers at home, so therefore it's not an equal playing field for all of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any board members like to publicly comment? Okay, we are closing the public comment session, do we have need for a non-public session tonight?
No.
And we are ready to adjourn, someone wants to make that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.